Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order with the Secretary. Please call the roll.
Anna Braun.
Here.
Timothy Cummings.
Here.
Jamie Falco.
Here.
Louis Figueroa.
Here.
Lori Herrick. Lee Wu-Hong.
Here.
Wilbur Pan.
Here.
Mary Antanez.
Here.
Heather Gwass.
Here. If we have a quorum, please rise to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening in this very chilly room on this very hot day. All right, the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed and acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the East Brunswick Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be posted at the Board of Education offices. Written notice was also provided to the Sentinel, the Newark Star-Ledger, the Home News and Tribune, the Alternative Press of East Brunswick, and the Municipal Clerk of East Brunswick. All right, so we are here and now we are leaving. We have a need for a closed session. Whereas the Board of Education must discuss matters which are not appropriate for discussion in a public meeting and whereas these subjects are within the exceptions to the Open Public Meeting Act and are permitted to be discussed in closed session pursuant to NJSA 10-4-12B and whereas the Board of Education intends to discuss matters as listed in tonight's agenda, whereas the length of the closed session is estimated to be one hour, after which the public meeting of the Board shall reconvene and action will be taken. Can I have a motion, please?
Move.
Wilbur?
Second.
And second, Mary Ann. Thank you. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. We will see you in one hour. All right, hello and welcome back. It is nice, when we first start, there isn't anyone here, so it's nice to see people here. And we are going to begin with the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, President Gwass, and good evening, everyone. Over the past few weeks, our early learning academy preschool and kindergarten readiness summer programs have been filled with curiosity, creativity, and unforgettable adventures. Our little scientists in kindergarten readiness kicked things off with a dynamite exploration, learning about dinosaurs. And thanks to mad science friends dug for dinosaur bones and even made their very own fossils of a T-Rex tooth. From prehistoric times, we traveled straight to Italy where magical pasta pot just wouldn't stop. After reading Strega Noah, our littles discovered the magic of storytelling, friendship, and of course, a whole lot of noodles. Our weekly international day with our very own German teacher, Mr. Labrie, added even more cultural fun to the mix. Next, our young explorers set off on a safari day adventure, creating vibrant sand art and crafts while learning all about safari animals. And to wrap up the excitement, our summer ELA and kindergarten readiness students had the incredible opportunity to meet Detective Grant Corthen, a real-life hero who keeps our community safe. The children were absolutely thrilled by his visit and inspired by his dedication. At the high school, the student council met earlier this month and has planned a full calendar of activities, including some new events for students to enjoy. Fall sports are underway, with tennis and football already in action, with our other teams starting this Monday. Marching band camp begins Wednesday, August 20th, and the Bear Den will be ready to cheer on the first home game on Thursday, August 28th. Hard to believe that's coming so fast. The robotics teams proudly represented the school at the Middlesex County Fair this summer, and the class of 2026 will start their senior year with the annual Senior Sunrise on the first day of school, complete with a PTSA-sponsored breakfast. The high school counseling department is excited to present the annual Common Application Bootcamp this Monday, August 25th, at 11:00 a.m. at EBHS. The class of 2026 has been invited to come to the school and receive assistance from the counseling team with filling out their Common Application for colleges that they plan to apply to. The Common Application is a tool that students use to apply to multiple colleges in one single application. Even if students are not quite sure where they'll be applying just yet, the session is beneficial to help them get kick-started on the college application process. And students must register on the Google form that was sent to their email earlier to attend. Due to the community's incredible support of our past school supply drives, our district is well-stocked with backpacks and school supplies for students in need. And this year, the Student Services Department is shifting its focus to a hygiene supply drive. And to learn more or to arrange a drop-off, please contact the Student Services Department at 732-613-6797. The annual student information forms are now available on Parent Access. All forms must be completed and submitted by Thursday, August 21st. These forms are critical as they give us important information that protects your child. Student schedules and teacher assignments will be available on Parent Access on Friday, August 22nd, at 3:00 p.m. You will not be able to view your child's schedule or your teacher assignment until the annual student information forms are submitted. Thursday, September 4th, and Friday, September 5th are single-session days for the high school only, and I'm wishing everyone a safe and successful remainder of the summer and start of the school year.
I just want to piggyback with that for any, not about the Senior Sunrise for the seniors. The seniors have the best time at the Senior Sunrise. My comment is for the parents of the seniors. I remember Senior Sunrise was the first moment of total anxiety and heartbreak for me in the beginning of both of my older children's senior year, so my heart goes out to the senior parents because Senior Sunrise is the beginning of the lasts. Also, that comment, yeah?
I'm sorry, just when you finish, I just need to make, I made a mistake.
Ooh, go ahead.
Because I forgot to mention that in regard to the student forms, if you have, do not have internet access or need help filling out the forms, we will have assistance right here in the Administration Building, and that will occur on Monday, August 18th, from 9:00 to 12:00, and Monday, August 25th, from 9:00 to 12:00.
Awesome. We're going to put that up on social media, so?
We will put that up on social media, on Facebook, and we have put out notifications, I believe, to the community with reminders.
That's awesome. Also, that Common App Bootcamp, if you have a student who's dreading doing their college application, which I don't know any students who are not, that is a wonderful opportunity to kind of get your feet in and lose some of the fear. And I already did my student information forms because I had somebody who was very upset that she might not be able to find out who her teacher was if I was not on time, so ours are done. All right, that takes us up to our superintendent search update. I want to thank the Board. If, I don't know, I feel like with our life, it's all we think about, so I feel like everybody knows what's going on with superintendent searches throughout the county, but I suspect other people are having a better summer and aren't 100% invested in student or superintendent searches throughout all of Middlesex County, but we are not the only ones. And in fact, there is a rather high number of districts currently searching for a superintendent. So our schedule has been fairly aggressive, which puts us out ahead of other districts, which I think will offer East Brunswick a huge advantage. We worked to craft a schedule. I am so grateful to the Board for agreeing to this schedule and giving up quite a bit of summertime to make this happen so that East Brunswick can hopefully have the first pick of the best of the best. And I want to thank the Board. We were here last night rather late for a meeting for the superintendent search. We are all going to be giving up Saturdays for this process during the summer, and I am just incredibly grateful. And I want to share with the public where we are in the search, that we had a very high number of completed applications. The search firm was very happy. We, as a Board, were very happy with the number of completed applications. The applicant pool was extraordinary, and that so far, I think I can speak for the Board when I say that we are happy with our progression and happy in what we have in front of us. So I think that's where we are right now. And we are going to Dr. Bowley with a presentation. Thank you.
Okay, great. Okay, good evening, everyone. Tonight, I'll be presenting the results of our assessment from last school year, three assessments, the WIDA Access for Ls, the Dynamic Learning Maps, and the New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment. The access is administered by WIDA, the publisher, and that's the World Class Instructional Design and Assessment. The DLM is the Dynamic Learning Maps, and the NJGPA is the New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment, administered by Pearson. And just to let you know that we received the assessment results for these three assessments in June, and the state requires us to present the results within 60 days of receipt, so that's why I'm presenting these tonight. We will not have the final NJSLA results until the end of August, so I'll be presenting those results in September. Okay, so when we look at these little faces here on the screen, to get started, I want to thank Dr. Valeski and the Board for all of your support throughout the years in supporting our students. I also would like to thank our amazing administrative team and all of our school staff who go above and beyond every single day for every single child. We know that our students come to us with different needs, academic, social, cultural, emotional, and economic, and the Department of Academics works very closely with the Special Education Department, the Counseling Department, and other student services to develop strategies and interventions that remove barriers to ensure that every child reaches his or her potential and is successful. Okay, so first up, we have Access for Ls. This is a state-mandated assessment for our multilingual learners in grades K through 12. These students are those who qualify for ESL services. The access stands for Assessing Comprehension and Communication in English State-to-State. The students are evaluated across six performance indicators, as you see on the screen, entering, emerging, developing, expanding, bridging, and reaching. And this assessment is one of several measures to decide if a student is ready to exit the ESL program, and a minimum score of 4.5 is required for exit eligibility. So our student body in East Brunswick is quite multilingual. We have over 28 students in our general enrollment population who speak 71 different languages at home, in addition to English. That's 36% of our students. When we're looking at our ESL students, the top five languages spoken by our ESL students are Arabic, Spanish, Mandarin, Hindi, and Urdu. The ESL screening process begins upon registration. Any student whose home language is not English is tested for ESL eligibility. Last school year, our ESL enrollment rose to 410 students, and those students speak 31 different languages. And currently, our multilingual learners make up 5% of our district-wide enrollment. And to note, our new enrollments, new students registering in the district, 26% of them are eligible for ESL services. Over to the right of the slide, you can see that time in program, 65% of our students remain in the ESL program for two years, 26% remain for three or four years, and a small percentage continue beyond the four years. So here, we see a heat map overview. This displays the number of students in each Access for Ls scoring category. We're looking at proficiency by grade here. The darker green areas indicate higher concentrations of students within that category. In regards to the score distribution, about 66% of our students are concentrated in the developing and expanding categories. That's the three and four, the orange and yellow, just below the 4.5 score required to exit the program. When we look at the upper-level scores, few students fall into the bridging and reaching, the five and six, the green and blue there. Typically, students are exiting when they earn that 4.5, which is between the expanding and bridging, so less students will be earning those higher scores because they've exited the program. Another notable cluster appears in the kindergarten entering category. Kindergarteners whose home language is not English are tested for ESL eligibility, and many require substantial English language support upon starting school with us. And then the panel over to the right is looking at trend data. The right-hand panel is showing the number of testers in 2025 compared with the past three years, along with the number meeting the exit criteria. So despite the increased growth in our multilingual student population, the percentage of students exiting each year remains around 20%. Moving into the DLM Alternative Assessment, every student succeeds Act allows for the use of alternative assessments based on alternate achievement standards, and these are for our students with most significant cognitive disabilities. The, in regards to eligibility, the students who qualify have not been exposed to the New Jersey Student Learning Standard Curriculum, which is assessed by the New Jersey Student Learning Standard Assessment, and may instead be able to demonstrate their academic achievement through the DLM assessment in a flexible one-on-one testing format. The IEP team carefully evaluates whether this assessment is appropriate for the student and with the purpose of really removing physical, intellectual, emotional, and technological barriers so that students have a fair and equitable assessment opportunity to assess their learning. And currently here in East Brunswick, students with disabilities represent 19% of our student population. The New Jersey Department of Education has determined that students classified under specific learning disability, emotional regulation impairment, auditorially impaired, orthopedic impairment or speech-language impairment are no longer eligible for the DLM Alternative Assessment. As a result of this, we have 122 students, 40% of the students who had previously taken the DLM, 40% of those students are now participating in the NJSLA. So to the right there, where you see the red 70, if these 122 students who took the assessment the prior year were participating, that would be added on, so that that would be up to 192 students. And looking at proficiency by subject, the DLM measures students' ability to understand and apply knowledge and skills using what's called essential elements, which are specific statements aligned with grade level expectations in the NJSLS. The Dynamic Learning Maps Essential Elements serves as a bridge from the Student Learning Standards content to academic expectations for students with the most significant cognitive disabilities. Students who are scoring in the darker colors, in the at-target or advanced levels, have met or exceeded expectations for their grade level and subject based on these essential elements. So for ELA, we see 43%, math 34%, and science 21%. Some students, if you notice a difference in the participation numbers between ELA and math, some students may take the SLA for one subject and the DLM for a different subject, so that explains the discrepancy there. And, you know, just as a reminder, since in 2025, fewer students participated in the DLM who were higher functioning there participating in the SLA last year, therefore, the year-to-year proficiency comparison is really not applicable because there's such a different amount of students participating. In regards to the New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment, this is based on Algebra I, Geometry, and 10th Grade ELA standards, and the scale score of this assessment determines if a student is graduation-ready or not yet graduation-ready. This is the primary pathway to meet the graduation assessment requirements. Participation is mandatory for all 11th graders, except those taking the DLM. So just some numbers for you. In regards to our graduating class last June, 639 students, or 90% of the students, met the graduation requirement through this pathway, through success on the New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment. 51 students, or 7%, chose Pathway 2, and they demonstrated proficiency on either the Acuplace or PSAT or SAT, sorry. And some students had IEP exemptions, and that was 31 students, or 4%, and we had no students with a graduation appeal, and we had no portfolio options last year. And other statistics on our graduating class, we had 721 seniors last year. We graduated 705, 98% graduation rate, four-year graduation rate. The difference is the other 2%. Students receiving special education services who meet certain criteria are eligible to remain with us until the age of 21, and we have 15 students following that pathway, and we have one student pending a summer graduation. Okay, looking at the GPA for Language Arts. The gray bars show the last two years of proficiency. The red bar on the right shows the New Jersey average, which is 81% passing for English Language Arts. In blue, we see the 92% of all of our students are passing the 11th-grade graduation proficiency assessment. And looking at the general enrollment, these are students not receiving special education services, not receiving ESL services, and not considered economically disadvantaged. That number rises to 99% passing rate. And then on the right, you see subgroup performance. The Department of Education uses demographic subgroup data from assessments to identify potential opportunity gaps. Another note, when we think about economically disadvantaged, our current district-wide population is at 21% economically disadvantaged, and our new enrollments, our new students who are enrolling here in the district, 40% are economically disadvantaged or living in poverty. Mathematics. Again, all multilingual learners are required to participate in this assessment their first year in a U.S. school. We see again the 2023, 2024. All the way to the right, we see in red the New Jersey average of 58%, and then our average of all of our students in blue, the 80%, and then the general enrollment is up to 90%. So we sustain our efforts to identify and meet the academic needs of all students, offering the necessary supports to help every child reach their full potential. I think that it's important to note that over the past 10 years, the number of economically disadvantaged students or children living in poverty in this district has increased by 53%. Over the past 10 years, the number of ESL students has risen by 79%. The number of students receiving special education services has risen by 35%. So with these changes, we're seeing an increase in students who require additional services, and this may require us to assign additional resources.
Questions? All right. Do we want to just go around, or I'm just going to start from this way and work around, and then I'll come back if you don't have. So, Wilbur, do you have anything at this point?
Yeah, yeah, thanks for the presentation. It was very helpful. I just had one question in terms of the scoring system for the access to ELLs. It's a six-point scale, right?
Yes.
If proficiency is at 4.5 and the students are then exiting the program at that point because they've hit proficiency, why do we have a six-point scale? Is this like a standard?
Yes, yes, it's a standard. Yes, it's a national, yes.
And is that 4.5 also a standard in terms of how we're defining?
Yes, yes.
All right, thanks.
And just so you know, when students exit, we still monitor them for two years after. All right, Anna, at this time. All right, Lori?
Thank you for your presentation. My first question is, so this year, we saw about 20% of ESL students
Yes.
met the 4.5 proficiency criteria. So what targeted strategies are planned to increase the percentage of students, meaning that of the exit benchmark? And how do our exit rates compare to those of the state average?
The state doesn't release exit criteria in regards to, you know, because it's so varied. It varies on the student when they enter the district. It varies on their proficiency level when they enter the district. It varies on their age. If they're in kindergarten, they're more likely to reach proficiency quicker than, say, an 11th grader who's coming to the U.S. for the first time. So there's a lot of variables in regards to that rate. In regards to supports, our students are receiving, students who need the support are receiving the high intensity or the second period of support. All of our teachers have been trained in sheltered instruction, and that will continue. All of our ESL teachers have been ORT and trained, and, you know, in many cases, there's hand scheduling, so the students are receiving special placement. Another thing to note is about 5% of students who are deemed eligible for ESL services, there are parent refusals, about 5%. So the students are eligible but not receiving services.
Great, thank you. My next question, so, is about the DLM and the Dynamic Learning Maps. So since the recent New Jersey Department of Education guidance excludes certain disability categories from the DLM, what are the most, like, how is a district ensuring that these students are succeeding on the NJSLA or the NJGPA, and I know we don't have all that yet, but with the required accommodations? And what are the most common accommodations or accessibility features that we utilize here?
Well, based on the students' child study team evaluation, individualized goals and objectives are in place for each child so that they will address their learning needs. Supports are in place for each child so that they can help access the general curriculum and meet grade level expectations. In regards to testing accommodations, I would say extra time, small group, frequent breaks, and text-to-speech are probably the most common.
Thank you. Tim?
Thank you for the presentation. Lots of, lots of information. I almost feel like I need a cup of tea to sit down and go through it all again. It seems as if, though, and correct me if I'm wrong, that you feel pretty positive about the trends that you're seeing in our progression over time, particularly as it relates to the last two to three years. With that said, there's always, you know, we're human, and the district is human, and there's always opportunities to make improvements. And I'm curious, from your opinion, where do you think are our best opportunities to improve in terms of continuing to move this in the right direction and support our kids?
That's a great question. I think that looking at the support we're providing for our teachers to meet the needs of the diverse student population is going to be paramount. So I know that, you know, our instructional coaches were, you know, on the chopping block with the budget a few years back, but perhaps finding some kind of creative way to convert, you know, some kind of position into that, to support that tier-one instruction in the classroom, would be very important. Anything else?
No.
Okay. I have. Thank you for the presentation, and it is a lot of information to digest. The part, well, I did have just a really factual question. Do we have students who achieve the 4.5 for ESL and opt to stay in? Do they have that opportunity, or do they have to move out? They're exited. Okay, because I know parents refuse services, but I wondered if parents ever asked to remain. My other question is just about our changing trends, because I know, you know, we saw with the hygiene drive and the number of people that, I mean, we have, people are very and the number of people that, I mean, we have, people are very, very generous to provide for our students who need, but we have such a changing demographic. And we have a very, our influx of students right now, it's just staggering, the difference in our students. So I wanted to ask, I mean, our new student enrollment, that's forty-one percent economically disadvantaged. They're coming in across the grade levels, this is not, so we have that. And then we have this percentage raise, fifty-three percent economically disadvantaged, seventy-nine percent ESL, this rise, thirty-five percent rise in special education. The district is going to see changes in our test scores, I'm sure. Like, as I was listening to these numbers, I'm waiting for Mr. Hong to gasp, because this isn't going to be like a ripple in a pond. This is going to be like throwing major boulder, and we need to meet the needs of every child, and we're very committed to that. But how do you project we meet the needs when these numbers are so rapidly rising? It's a different population.
I think the state will move more towards a growth model. So not every child may pass that test, but they better be showing adequate yearly growth in learning. I think that's a more equitable way to measure.
And our tier-three intervention, does that stay steady at just five percent?
It's pretty, been pretty consistent. You know, after that tier-three is still not meeting the needs of the students, and they're not responding to that tier-three intervention is after, when they would perhaps go to a child study team referral. So it is, it's a fluid process. Many of the students are coming back down because those interventions are working, but sometimes they're not effective.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Hong?
Yes. Okay, let's talk about the data. Please go to page number four. So, there is data showing the continued ESL student lens of time in program.
Yes.
If we combine first year and second year, we'll be sixty-five percent. Last year, we have seventy-five percent. Which means this year, we have more, we have more students need more time in third year, fourth year, and fifth year. So that means more students need more help, because they, as a matter of fact, they stay longer time in this program. So this is very alarming sign. Okay, let's go to the next.
May I comment on that, Mr. Hong?
Yes, please.
It is hard to compare last year's numbers with this year's numbers because they're completely different children. And as I said, there are many factors that could influence a student's ability to acquire the English language, such as their proficiency level when they arrive here in our district, the language they're coming with, their age. So I understand your concern that there are many students who need a lot of support in acquiring English language. But last year's numbers, you know, many of those students may have moved up levels or exited out, and this is this year's group.
So I understand your explanation. But last year, we have three hundred forty-seven students in this category. This year, we have four hundred ten. By statistic, this should be bigger enough pool to show the significance of the percentage. Okay, let's go move to next. So we have the exit rate for every year for the comparison. So my understanding is that when students achieve or reach a certain level, they will exit this program. So 2022, the exit rate is twenty-five percent. Twenty-three is twenty-one percent. Twenty-four is nineteen percent. And this year, twenty percent. In last four years, there are about five percent decrease, which means we, our student performance is gradually drafting to the direction which I don't like. This is second alarming sign.
Mr. Hong, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
So you're talking about percentages of students who exit the program?
Yes.
But shouldn't we be comparing the total pool of students who are in the program when we look at that percentage? I think that that number that you're talking about is somewhat skewed, because you've got to look at the entire population of students who are in the program.
I understand your point, sir. We are talking about the ELL, English Language Learner. We are talking about specific group, subgroup. Okay, let's move the DLM. So then for comparison.
Oh, yeah, sure. Sorry, no problem.
Previous one, please. Next, previous one. The dynamic learning maps. So next page. Next page. Okay, that's one. Okay, so for comparison, so if we, let's combine as the advanced and it target. I assume for those two categories, which means those students reached our educational target. So for the ELA, last year, we have fifty-eight percent. This year, we only have forty-three percent. For the math, last year, we have fifty-nine percent. This year, we have only thirty-four percent. For science, last year, we have twenty-five percent. This year, we have twenty-one percent. So this is this is more than alarming sign. This is covered every subject. I'm sorry.
I think, sorry, Mr. Hong is saying, because I did the math. It's a twenty-eight percent decrease, a forty percent decrease, and a twenty-five percent decrease. So that's, those are.
Again, there were a hundred twenty-two less high-functioning students taking this test. And this test is for our most significant cognitively impaired students.
So, you know, we are now dealing with ten, twenty students. And when we deal large number of students, the trend, the statistic number means a lot. We're not talking about few students, we're talking hundreds of students. Okay, so let's get the IEP GPA mathematics. Move to next page. Or let's go to the second, to the last page. This is the last one, previous page. Okay. So twenty twenty-four, New Jersey average is fifty-five percent. And this year is fifty-eight percent, which is three percent and more. But this year, we, last year and this year, we keep constant twenty, eighty percent. This may be not an alarming sign, but it's a very good sign for us to look at our teaching. So that's all my question. And maybe I'm wrong, but I look at the data.
All right, Jamie?
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Bowley. If we stay on this slide, I just have some remarks. I was personally perturbed by this. Children with IEPs are no less intelligent than any other child, they just learn differently. And to see that there is a considerable inequity in the graduation readiness, I think speaks to how we educate these students. My background is in visual processing and learning. And what I see across the state, which is not a failure of us, but at the state level, in my opinion, is that that is not a facet of education and learning that is addressed or measured in any sort of way. So I wonder what opportunities we have to innovate in this space to find better ways to address the learning inequity that exists for these students in math?
Well, we certainly are working very closely with the child study teams in the school buildings, as well as the special ed department, the supervisors and the director, to support them and to support the child study teams in crafting programs that meet the individualized needs of the children in regards to supports in the area of mathematics. We use diagnostic data to identify areas of unfinished learning for students and build foundational gaps. Our teachers differentiate in the classroom to meet their students' needs every day. We offer basic skills support and support classes, so students are receiving that math instruction every single day for identified students. We're also offering tutoring after school from our old teachers in all of our schools.
Thank you.
Dr. Bowley, thank you for your presentation this evening. Most of my questions have been answered tonight, but there was something you said I just want to follow up on for the public. You said that students who are eligible for services, there's about five percent that the parents say they don't want services.
Correct.
What can we do, or what are we doing for that five percent? So those students are still getting a chance to be successful throughout the school year.
Our supervisor is calling every parent to make sure they fully understand what services entail. Sometimes there's misunderstanding or miscommunication. Our, again, our staff have been receiving the sheltered instruction professional learning, so that they have the strategies to meet the needs of the students when they're in the classrooms. And the children are being assessed by law, so the results are here. And, you know, it's a matter of, between the building principal and the supervisor, building relationships with the family, so that they can help the children get the support they need.
Thank you, Dr. Bowley, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Dr. Bowley. Just to confirm, in response to Ms. Herrick's question about the state's standards for the four and a half, four point five exit, you said there, the state doesn't report a standard.
I think her question was, does our twenty percent-ish annual exiting rate align with the state average of students exiting ESL services in every district throughout the state?
Right, and does it?
That information is not reported.
So, okay, and then, and then in response to Mr. Hong's question about, you know, it's hard to compare, you said it's hard to compare last year's students to this year's students. So, because the students are obviously different. So, I love data, but my concern is, what is the value of data if we have nothing to benchmark it against?
With the ESL exiting?
With everything, because those were two different topics.
The students exiting, we see the trends over the last few years of how many students, what percentage of students are exiting the program.
Sorry, but you said that we can't compare last year's students to this year's students. So then, what are we using as a comparator?
Well, the program is exiting the children, all of the children. It's, the program is meeting the needs and successful in ensuring that the children are acquiring English language enough that they can exit the program. I think what Mr. Hong was referring to is the number of students who are a Level One this year versus the number who were a Level One last year.
Mr. Hong's question was on the DLM. So you said, you know, if you go back a few slides?
Yep.
Yeah, right there. So when we asked about that, again, respectively, twenty-eight, forty, and twenty-five percent decrease, you said it's hard to, we can't use this because it's hard to compare last year's students to this year's students. So what is the benchmark, how do we?
What I was trying to explain is that one hundred and twenty-two, or forty percent of the children who have previously taken the DLM did not take it. Forty percent of the higher-functioning students did not take this exam last year. So the students who did take the exam were deemed eligible and required an alternative assessment due to their significant cognitive disability. That's what I was saying, I wasn't saying you can't compare. I mean, there's a totally different amount of students taking the test.
Right. And so, my point is, when we look at data, it should be thorough all the way through.
This was the first year that we excluded the students with the, all of these disabilities listed here. This was the first year that they were not eligible to take the DLM. So next year, we'll be able to compare students who are eligible to take the DLM, one-year growth over time.
Okay. And then regarding the students who are economically disadvantaged, how is that determined? You know?
Free and reduced lunch applications and the census data.
So, that makes them, please explain to me why that?
There's a poverty level established by the government, I guess.
Okay.
And if they fall below that poverty line, they're considered economically disadvantaged.
Okay. That's all, thank you. I have, oh, okay, go ahead, Anna. Okay. I'm looking at this page with the tier one, the tier.
Yep.
So, I'm a little, I just want some clarification. There's, we're going to be doing that new pilot in the, in the elementaries, right, for ILA?
Correct.
Okay. So, how, in those pilot groups, right? Because I believe we're going up, we're looking at two different curriculums.
Yes, that's correct.
Right, and then you have your control, which I guess would be the regular.
The current curriculum, yes.
Okay. So, how is this pilot going to impact our ELL students? Are they being included in the new curriculums that are being tested?
If they're in those general classrooms, but they're pulled out for their ESL instruction and perhaps their high-intensity period.
Okay. All right, because.
Based on their proficiency level. If they don't speak any English, then they're pulled out twice a day. If they're coming along in their proficiency, then they may only have that one period.
Okay, all right. And then I guess the same question with students with special needs. Are they going to be included in the groups with the new curriculum?
If they're in those homerooms.
So the, they're like, the way that the schedules were set up, they're, the classes were set up in the way that they normally would be? Is that how it is?
From my experience, the principal and the teachers create class lists at the building level.
Okay, right.
We identify two teachers at every grade level in all of the buildings to pilot these programs. And where the students are placed is a building decision.
Okay, so that happened at the building level?
Like it always does.
Which, right, okay, so I just wanted to make sure that, that that because we're doing new curriculum, that we don't have some of our kids falling through the cracks, you know?
Absolutely. Well, the universal screener data will be very helpful in that regard.
Okay, all right, thank you. Anybody else over here again? I do have a question about data that's just difficult. But do we in any way collect information about if students are literate, like, able to read and write in their home language?
They do, they do.
Okay.
And that would determine where their proficiency level is, yes.
Yeah, I was thinking, when you were asking your questions, I was thinking about, I know many of us who are in education, we've had the experience of you get students that are coming in to the country at, you know, different levels in their education. But if they're coming in economically, if they're economically experiencing challenges, but if they're coming from a rural area, I've had the issue of, you have the additional challenge that they hadn't learned to read, not a cognitive issue, but they hadn't learned to read in their home language. So there was the additional level of, now I have a ninth grader who didn't learn to read before, so we're.
And if you look in the red, the tier-three at the top, you'll see SIF, New Commerce Basic Beginners. Some students are coming to us with a very limited formal education. So they may be in 10th grade and haven't been to school since 4th grade. So we're creating individualized plans.
Do we have numbers on that, or are we just seeing a trend?
I could get numbers for you.
Thank you. Anyone else down here again? Lea?
Yes. So, Dr. Bowley, I forgot to thank you for the, a lot of information. So when I, I'm now trying to embarrass you, maybe I'm wrong, but I'm trying to do my data analysis, try to find the trend. Because we, as the board member, I as a board member, I try to make sure, you know, we provide adequate education to every student. So if we look at the number, you know, every year, we got a very significant amount of students speak different language at home. So, you know, last year, we have thirty-six percent. So this year, we have forty-one percent. This is a very large student body. We have to do our job to help those students. And you told me that we have forty percent of students is economically disadvantaged. This is a very large number of students. We need to put our efforts there. We need to do a good job to help those students. We have to prepare them well for their future. So I think that's all. Thank you again for the nice presentation.
Anybody else down here?
Just one more thing, sorry, did you have? Oh, cool.
We're all looking, geez.
So I'm just kind of trying to look at this again from like a really high level, and I'm just curious if these statements are fair. The town is growing. The town is growing and the challenges that are coming into our district, challenges, right, are, are increasing in a way. How do we educate people who are coming in with, it's a more diverse population potentially, which is a good thing, but also it's bringing different challenges to the community in terms of our ability to, to meet the many, the needs are increasing. So I just want to make sure that's sort of a fair.
Yes, that's very fair.
Okay. And that's, and that's where I'm like, oh, boy, right? Because we are, you know, continuing to see, and, and we're going to be talking about this in six months or eight months, you know, more money potentially being cut from our community that we need to meet those needs. And I think the trends of those needs have continued at the same rate, right? Like this, you know, 10 years ago, we weren't having these conversations. Or if we were, they, all of these numbers were reduced. So these numbers are growing and the talent and the expertise that we need within the community to accommodate those needs and allow those needs to excel, it is a great challenge. It sounds like this is a great challenge for, for you and your team.
It is a challenge. Last year, the district unprecedented had 70 homeless families here in East Brunswick's public schools. So of course, those children come with a, another unique challenge that they're, that they're struggling with and trying to meet the social and emotional and academic needs of all of the children coming from war and torn countries and, and all of, all of the things is, is, is a lot. It's a lot, yeah. We're trying our best every single day, Mr. Hong. I know that you are up here doing your due diligence and I want to rest assured that my team and I and the principals in the building care about every single child as much as we all do here in this room. And we're working every single day to meet the needs of everyone.
I never doubt your effort. You have my full support. You have my 100% respect. I know you guys are doing very, very good job. But the situation is dynamic. We have different student body. And apparently the state is not giving us enough money. And, and then to give you the challenge, give you the challenge, how to do your job well with limited financial resources, but more challenged student body.
If I could, I want to touch on what Mr. Cummings said about the change in the community. And one of the things that we have, we have undertaken here locally in East Brunswick is we have typically done fundraisers for cancer research and a variety of other very, very worthy charitable causes. But a year and a half or maybe two years ago, we started collecting money for gift cards that are used by families for essentials like an Uber or a Lyft to get to an essential appointment. That's what we've seen change differently. And we're, we're talking tonight about the performance of students, but there's a family structure behind every student. And that, that has changed tremendously over the last five, six, seven years. Not only because of international conflict and immigration to the United States, but, you know, the people are, they're seeking quality education in East Brunswick. And they're, they're coming here at, at every expense that they have to get here. But then they are struggling to maintain. You know, they're having to work multiple jobs. They are, you know, they're maintaining. And, and that's what we're seeing different in the last five or six years.
I just wanted to ask, with the, with our changing financial situation for many of our families and the challenges they're having, and with our changing economy, this seems to be evolving more rapidly than it has in previous years. Are we moving towards any of our schools? Like, are we moving towards Title I?
All of our schools are Title I except for Frost and Warren Stuffer.
But we're not moving towards Frost and Warren Stuffer?
I don't know their numbers off the top of my head.
But the high, the high school was Title I last year.
They were for the first time.
I was going to say, that just happened, right?
Sorry, when did all those things happen?
Last year, the high school was.
No, all the schools, when did, except for Warren Stuffer and Frost?
They had been Title I schools previously, all except the high school. High school became a Title I school last year.
So, Dr. Bulley, if I can just add, I think what, what would be really helpful to see is that the data is great, but it, it doesn't mean anything without this is our data and here's our plan to rectify some of this. I think that's the transparency that we'd like to see of. Because otherwise, when we look at this, like Mr. Hong said, it's disturbing. So for some of it, it's like, okay, but what is going to be done about it? So I think it would be helpful, and I know you're saying you're meeting with your teams and discussing, if we could see what that looks like, what the plan is to, to address these issues.
Okay.
For moving forward. Thank you.
Yeah.
I just wanted to piggyback on that. When we have Student Services, the committee meet, we have these fantastic presentations that happen about what the teams are doing to meet these needs. And especially, I, I wish more members of the public could see it, especially because we talk a lot about the changing needs of our students. You know, if you're looking at Maslow's hierarchy of needs, it is very hard for a student to be available for learning if they are not feeling safe, if they don't have shelter, if, you know, they're feeling insecure in just their physical safety. So I really would like to discuss as, as a board and with the administration, if maybe we can move some of the Student Services presentation into the open public meeting so more people could see that information, because there are amazing things happening in the district, your teams through, you know, special services. And it's great to have the committee meeting, but not enough people get to see what we offer, what's out there, what we're doing, and what our changing needs are. Because I feel like in the time that I've been on the board, the changes have just picked up the speed so dramatically. And our students' needs aren't like increasing in one area and decreasing. They're just increasing all over the place. So I would like to discuss if we could bring some of those Student Services presentations into the meetings, even if it makes it feel longer, because I think that information would be valuable for everyone. And we can't have all of us at the committee meeting because then it becomes a different kind of meeting. So if we could discuss bringing some of them here.
Let's do it.
Yeah, just to add on, on to that, I went to my first Student Services meeting back in, back in the late spring. And just to lay out what that experience was like, there were tables making a gigantic square that filled up that entire area of the room, packed with people, packed with teams that were doing incredible things for the, for our, for our students. But, and, and it was wonderful, but we were just kind of talking to each other. And I agree, it'd be great if the public could see more directly what.
I agree. That's been the frustration of the committee is we have some parent representation, but I think especially with the mental health things that we offer, with the things that we offer for our students that are economically disadvantaged, for the things that we offer, the ELLs, it would be better if more people were aware.
Good idea.
Because people are doing great work, but it's just very quiet.
All right, thank you. Anybody else with anything else? All right, thank you so much. Okay.
See, I, I, last night they changed the format on my reading for the good of the cause for the public, and he messed me up. I'm still mad. I got to, like, I read this all the time, and I'm like, what happened? So, I'm ready.
It, it's like at Mass when, you know, whoever's reading, doing the readings, like starts on the part that's outside the brackets and then they're committed to the long.
That's what happened to me last night. I was like, we just went off the, off the script. I got very, I was a little miffed, but we're good for tonight. All right, for the good of the cause for the public. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. To protect the privacy of all students and staff, concerns regarding individual students and staff members should generally be addressed by first meeting with the appropriate administrative staff. In order to permit the fair and orderly expression of such comment, the board shall provide a period of public comment at every board meeting. If you step up to the mic, you have three minutes. The board secretary will keep the time when you step up. If you could state your name and address, unless you are a student, and then it's your name and your school, we would appreciate it. Is there anyone here that's wishing to address the board? Hi, Dom.
Is this just for the presentation, or is this for like the whole meeting?
This is the whole.
Whole, okay.
Is I supposed to do questions for the public? Okay.
Okay.
Just checking.
Don Sclafani, Sixth Fairfield, Sixth Fairfield Road. One number one, can we please pave the parking lot? There's like gigantic craters of potholes there. So that's one.
I'm with you on that.
Thank you, thank you. Two, in regards to the presentation, what is, what is currently being done clearly isn't working. The numbers are going down. If they were going up, we would, we'd have no problem, but they're going down. Saying you can't compare last year's students as a cop-out because it's still, it's, it's not like they're their own, their own thing. They're still in the same, the same age group. My question is this, how do we provide more support? And please do not answer in generalities. Please give, please give an answer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Antoinette Evola, 45 Merrill Avenue. I came here, I want, I was going to say something else, but after seeing this presentation, I've never been so insulted in my entire life. I cannot believe that you have given a separate line item for children who don't have money. I was free and reduced lunch when I was in school, and I was very smart. That is, that is the most biggest excuse I've ever saw in my life. And, and I understand you're giving us this data and you're saying you took 100 kids away from last year. Just because the state said these 100 kids can't take the tests anymore doesn't mean that those kids wouldn't have done poorly also. It just means they weren't eligible anymore. So let's not try and sell it for something else. Number two, not a single one of you mentioned that the black and brown children are only at a 50% advantage for graduating. Why are those children not a focus for everybody? What, what makes them unable to get to the 70% that I saw for the poor children? Because that's really what they are. We're gonna, we could use fancy words, but let's call them what they really are, right? So because I was poor when I was younger, I was expected to fail and make your numbers look bad. Now let's talk about the other thing I wanted to talk about on this chart. You have 504 children getting 83%, IEP 28%. I took, I put a survey out today to get the public's opinion about what, the, the public's climate, about everything. And I cannot tell you how many special education parents commented anonymously that their, their children are in classrooms with teachers who are not qualified to teach them. They are not certified to teach them, they don't know how to teach them. Even with a 504, and I'm a 504 parent, and I'm sure everybody's heard me talk about Adrian before. And he's probably going to get pissed that I just dropped his name, but it's fine. He just learns differently, exactly, exactly how Ms. Falco said. He just needs to be told a couple more times. He just needs to sit in the front of the classroom. Do you know how many people in this district have children with their kids just need a little bit extra? And there's teachers who can't even do that. I have to constantly, and Adrian's going into ninth grade. I have to constantly reach out to the teachers. And you know what I don't like? I don't like the fact that I have to find out by his other guidance counselor who his student service counselor is. Why is that not listed in his, in his Genesis portal? I'm sure there's a lot of parents in here or watching eventually that have children with IEPs and 504s who do not even know who their student service counselor is. We cannot put these numbers there and then try and sell me a dream that these are like this because we have children coming into the district who can't speak English. My husband grew up in Palermo. He came here when he was 14. He didn't speak English. He's an ESL, and he makes a lot of money. Just because you have a second language, just because you're poor, does not mean that you get to put hus, put them on a chart and make it look like it's there for that the numbers are down. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Rachel Botnick, 262 Bromley. Two words, differentiated instruction. It's lacking in this district. With all due respect, I have emailed every single one of you sitting at this dais, and I have said this for years. Your tests are across the board. There's no differentiation in your assessments, and you are using your assessments to analyze data and drive instructional decisions that are skewed. And that is why your test scores are going down. Your special ed students, the students that you said are no longer eligible for the DLM, are now thrown into the NJSLA. Have you given them supports before they took the NJSLA to make sure they know what test they're taking now? Because the DLM is very different. And I don't think any of you know what that is. It's, it's night and day different between an NJSLA and a DLM. So these kids who were in DLM for years are now thrown into a different environment. That's why your test scores are going down. They don't have special ed stu, teachers that are appropriately placed in classrooms. Supervisors are blaming the special education teachers that are put in there, and they are told to stick to pacing guides that are not accurately effective for the students they are teaching. You have made no concessions in any of your pacing guides, and now you're finally realizing it. I sat there with you for almost an hour and a half at the beginning of the summer. I couldn't believe how many notes you were taking on things that are not done in this district that I, in a Title I district, am required every single week that I show my lesson plans to have displayed in my lesson plans and in my classroom for special education students, 504 students, gifted and talented students, it doesn't matter. They all need accommodations. And if your test scores don't show that, then we have bigger problems than just test scores.
Thank you, Rachel.
I wasn't going to talk tonight, but Fran Snowe, Schindler Court. But I feel like I want to give you some solutions, because I'm good at that, right? I think that one of the things that we've talked about a lot is accountability. So I would like to just maybe piggyback a little bit on what was just said. I don't know that we necessarily need to be putting more money into maybe some of the numbers and the data that we're seeing. What we need to be doing is holding the teachers accountable, which means our principals have to have a tight notch on what's happening in the classrooms, what's happening everywhere they're going. I'm hearing we're piloting two new programs. I'm hearing we're down three supervisors. That's also making me think as an educator, oh, my goodness. Oh, my goodness, there are going to be teachers who are going to be paralyzed. And they're already not feeling so great. So I think that using the vice principals, using the principals, those are your people on deck, using people who are more seasoned teachers that are around, that have the time and the ability, the want, the need, the desire to support the teachers that might need that. But a, a little example of this is a few years ago, you guys did a kind of a workshop model for mathematics, if I'm not mistaken. And every mathematic classroom had whole group instruction, and it was a block schedule. And then you guys went to small group, individual group, and paired group, where it'd be like more intimate with the teacher, but with two or three kids. My own children, I've seen in a math classroom, had that be implemented, implemented well and really be successful. I've seen other math classrooms in the district where it was not, right? That difference right there, same, same curriculum, right? Same expectation. That was a teacher thing, I think, right? So that could be something that you double down on in your teachers. This is what's expected during math time. I don't know what happened to that workshop model with math. It might have dissipated a little bit. So in some rooms, it's not. So like, that's what I'm talking about, right? So it's like that accountability piece, kind of piggybacking on what was just said earlier. You know, that's really the principals' responsibilities and, and then user resources within. There are a lot of resources within, right? So, my piece on that.
Thank you, Fran. Anyone else? All right, then I'm going to close the public portion, which takes us to our agenda for this evening. All right. Our first item on our agenda is bylaws and policies. It's a first reading. I wanted to ask Mr. Giacobi if he could just explain. I've talked to people in the public and they said sometimes it's just very unclear what it is that we're doing. So when we're passing bylaws and policies, it's a multi-step process. So I thought Mr. Giacobi could explain how this happens.
So, bylaws are part of the policy. So bylaws and policies, what I like to do is I like to kind of equate it to, when a municipality, like the township of East Brunswick passes ordinances, whether it's zoning ordinances, or no parking overnight, or setbacks on yards if you're going to build something, those are the laws of East Brunswick. Policies and the bylaws are the laws of the Board of Education. And policies and the bylaws, they all emanate from New Jersey statutes. So, schools are governed under what's known as Title 18A. And that covers, that's all the laws that the state legislature has enacted that deals with schools. And they cover, it goes from K to 12 school districts, Rutgers, community colleges. It's all covered in 18A. So policies are passed, and there are a number of policies that are known as mandatory policies. So for example, there has to have policies about H- So for example, there has to have policies about HIB. That's a mandatory law. You have to have a mandatory policy. And so when people see a mandatory policy, it has an M on it. That's mandatory. Now what districts do, and if you look at the East Brunswick's policies, there are laws that govern the operation of the schools, rules for students, rules for staff members, rules for certificated staff members. And if you go to another district, Woodbridge, South Brunswick, their policies are all very similar. Why? Because there are two different policy companies in New Jersey. There's Strauss Esme, there's New Jersey School Boards, and they put out policies. And so all the districts subscribe to this, these programs to get policies. The policies come in, the board has a policy committee, which I believe you're the chair of, and the policy committee goes through the policies. There are many policies, and I'll just give you an example, that aren't mandatory, but boards could have it. So for example, there are, I represent a board where they've decided to implement a, a dress uniform policy. Not mandatory, but a board can do that. That's something that you can do. Policies change all the time. And why, how do they change? They change cuz either the legislation changes, or there's court cases, either New Jersey Supreme Court, US Supreme Court cases, that change and alter the policies. So the policy, these policy companies, they monitor all that, and they send out the, the updated policies to you. And it's the jo, the job of the board is to pass policies. You're basically setting the rules of, or the laws for all the students, all the staff, visitors, people who wanna use your facilities. That's all contained in policies. You also have what are known, in some policies, you'll see has regulations. And it's just like laws in, in, in our government. There are laws, and then there are regulations. And what the regulations do is they amplify the policy. They might give more detail. So for example, you have a policy that deals with students' tuition rates. When I say tuition rates, we charge people, if you don't live in the district, we charge them tuition. There's different ways of, of doing it. What qualifies as tuition, what doesn't. That would be in the regulation that the board does. So what happens is the board has a first reading, which is tonight. Basically, these publishing, these are the policies, so people can look at them. And then there's a second reading, and that's when they're adopted. Regulations are not, don't require the first and second reading. They can, they can be done by one reading. But what we do, and you'll see this happen often, is policies are on board meetings because there's been a change in the law, or you're just updating your policies. And I think you guys are going through, and you're going through and updating all your policies to making sure that they're compliant, and you're working with Strauss Esme to make sure that you have the latest policies that match the laws of New Jersey. So I hope that helps.
That does. Thank you. All right, can I have a motion for Board of Education items? I'm gonna go through the agenda one section at a time tonight because there's just quite a bit. But can I have a motion for Board of Education, items one through three?
Motion.
All right, Jamie?
Second.
Second, Mary Ann. All right, discussion? Lou?
So for the Board of Education, item number three, this is a job description for the supervisor of alternate program for grade K to 12. So for the, for the number 16, it says, hold a valid driver's license with no serious violation. I believe we need further definition of what is no serious violation to be more clear. So that's all comments I have.
Anyone else?
I have a comment on, in the policy, number three. For Alert 234, we're, we're, in particular, policy number 5516, the use of electronic communication devices. So I think it's moving in a very positive direction, personally. That's my own personal opinion. The, the one thing that I do think should be addressed and could be improved is the allocation that's within that policy to allow students to use cell phones during lunch in grade seven through 12. Again, personally, I don't adhere or believe that that's the right move for us as a community. So I just wanted to bring that to the attention of everybody and share my opinion.
We had, I'm gonna comment to that, too. We had a very robust conversation at the policy meeting the other night. And again, it, it has been a week of a lot of really interesting meetings. But while I am also in favor of significant restrictions on cell phones in schools as somebody who lives in a high school for a very, very long time, so many of our students work, and so many of our students are responsible for younger siblings after school. And with changing in sports, I understand parents' needs for wanting to be able to communicate with their child at at least some point midday, most significantly with the working and with supervision of younger siblings. I don't know if we should move to absolutely no cellphone use during the day, but I understand the families' desires to be able to reach their student.
Just one point of clarification on that. That specificity is within the regulation, not the policy. So just wanted to make sure that everyone was aware.
Thank you.
So the regulation will be at the next meeting, but yes, that is an important point.
And just add on to that, since we were talking about families that are facing financial challenges in our district, it's highly much more likely that it's actually those families that need to contact their older kids to help out with stuff that, that comes up, cuz both parents may not be available.
Anyone else? Discussion?
No. What kind of accessibility do those seven to 12 students have to their families throughout the day? Because what if there's a situation where a student feels like they just need to contact their parent? Is, is that permissible, that they're allowed to go and use their cellphone and?
So again, right now, we're talking about the policies. That's the regulation. So that's not on the table right now. That's on the next meeting.
Okay.
But just for clarification,
Yeah.
in the binders that the board received on this, that detail is reflected within the regulation.
Right. I was trying to let the public know. Yes, exactly. For transparency.
That, that particular item's not on the table right now.
Okay.
So we'll come back to that.
Okay, yeah.
Cuz I wanna talk about that.
Yes, me too.
It's good, it's good for the public to know how their children can contact them if they need to contact them. You're not wrong. Anyone else? Discussion on these?
Yeah, two questions, hopefully quick. On the academic integrity policy, I'm glad to see that AI is addressed here. Do we actually have an AI plan? Because that's, okay, great. And then the second thing, for item number three on the agenda, the the job description for supervisor of alternative programs. There are two edits I just wanted clarification on. One is that in the copy that I saw, restorative justice was struck out of the job description. So forgive my ignorance, but what is restorative justice, and why was that deleted?
Restorative, Dr. Pan, restorative justice was an opportunity for students to still be integrated in the school community, but to have like an intervention, to meet with somebody, to talk about why they were behaving, or what, you know, what their actions were. It's, it's, it's less punitive.
And that'll be absorbed at the, at the building level, but with the principal.
Okay. So that may answer my other question on that item. There was also a description of home instruction coordinator as part of this job that was also deleted. So it, so is that shifted over to?
That'll be reassigned to another supervisor.
Which one?
The supervisor of physical education and health.
Okay, thanks.
I'm a huge fan of restorative justice. It has a lot of student reflection on the impact of their behavior on others, which I like.
Yeah, I was just curious, with the proposed cellphone ban, especially for K to six, what, what drove this? Was there a survey put out to get an idea of what the parents' concerns are? Was there a survey put out to the staff to discuss, you know, the, the issues that they're seeing? I was just curious how you came up with this.
So Dr. Brom, we, the, the principals did put out surveys and collected information from, from the staff. But one of the things that we utilized was the, the real-life experiment at Hammerhill this year, which was a ban on cell phones. And what we heard from students was there was a greater satisfaction in social interaction. Parents didn't complain about it, and the, and the staff also reported that the students were more focused and engaged throughout the day. So that, that really became our benchmark for part of this policy.
Okay, good.
I've also had parents reach out to me asking about implementing a cellphone ban. And there is data to show that restricting access to devices results in better educational outcomes.
Oh, absolutely. And as a retired teacher, that was always a nightmare. You know, collecting cell phones when kids would be sneaking them out and everything, so. Okay, I just wanted to see where you got that from. And then I did have another question. Wait, this is a regulation, though. Should I wait to ask?
Yeah, the regulation should be at your next meeting, when you, when you guys are gonna be putting it on the, the.
The regulation will be on the agenda next meeting.
Oh, okay, cuz I had a question about class size, so. But I can, I guess I'll just wait until next time? Is that what you want me to do?
This is the policy, depends on which.
Well, it.
Twenty through 12?
It is 312, class size.
There's, unfortunately, the regulation and the policy have the same number.
Oh.
So, so the policy is a two-page document. If you are in your binder, it's in tab number four.
Yeah.
And the first document in that tab is the policy.
Okay. Oh, okay, right, cuz I, I guess I was on, looking at the next page because I was wondering about secondary schools when it says that a class in which fewer than 15 students are enrolled may be canceled, which I guess is like the minimum number that you need to run a class. Cuz I know when we were doing our, our budget things, that was a question that I had asked, and I, I don't remember getting an answer to it. My only concern then is, it, it says that you can have less than 15 students unless the elimination of the class will impair the school curriculum or deprive students of an essential unit in a sequential instructional program necessary for graduation, college application, employment, or other postgraduate use, which, you know, is pretty broad. So how few kids will you still run a class? If you have three kids signed up for an AP class, is that class still gonna run?
It's good, Dr. Brom, it's gonna be really hard in this budgetary environment to do that. And that's really where this conversation really got refined. And it was about, you know, at what point do we make decisions? Do you, as a board, make decisions about where that breakpoint is? And so that, that's really why that 15 number exists right now. And it requires the principals, when they're making schedules, take a hard look at that class. And, and, and is it sustainable for the public? Can we afford to do it? And it, it's really coming down to the economics
Right.
of, of running the education, and, and especially in an elective, elective environment.
Right, right. And I mean, because I understand, you know, you have a little wiggle room there. But honestly, the way that it's written, you could almost justify any class continuing on. I'm thinking, you know, like, I'm just gonna throw out AP music, cuz that's a class that I took when I was a kid. There were never that many kids in that class. And obviously, it's, my, my own children took AP music. So it was definitely something I was grateful that they could do because it made a difference for their college, you know, applications. I just am a little worried because of, we know we're gonna have more budget issues.
And I think there, right now, too, there's, there are other layers that we've put in place over the last two years to analyze what those class sizes are. So it's not a, it's not housed just within the school environment. It's being analyzed at, at our central office level. And in some cases, we're having conversations with the board and committees about those, those kinds of things, too. So I think there's, there's multiple strata that, that get looked at here for the future.
Just for clarification, again, that particular area is in the regulation itself. So regulation is not part of the conversation really right now. But also, I wanted to point out that that particular language was not being changed. It's not new. It's what the existing language had been.
Right, right. But I, it caught my eye, so.
All right, despite the fact that the regulation and policy thing, you should see the size of the policy binder that we all read for Monday and for this meeting. It's a lot to absorb. And then keep straight, which is regulation and policy. Any other discussion on Board of Education?
Yeah, I just have a couple remarks about policy, just because I think the audience can't see our binders. You know, with Strauss Esme, the language is very specific, and they try to adhere to the recommendations based on New Jersey Student Learning Standards. So for policy 2200, I think it's worth noting that the modifications were based on the legal suggestions. And I think the majority of this is, however, the cellphone policy, I appreciate that the board has been really thoughtful in having dialogue about this and addressing the mental health components and the academic, academic environment for our children. Can I bring up about what we discussed in that policy meeting about the addition of that one line? Is that permitted or no?
Sure, sure.
Okay, so based on constituent feedback, we added to the personal device policy just a remark that only approved devices within the district, the Chromebooks and issue devices, would be permitted in classroom learning. The idea was to make sure that these cell phones were fully in backpacks, and the language explicitly states in the policy that it is recommended cell phones and devices are left at home, which I think is, you know, really good warning. I think that that's worth noting to people. Thank you.
Anything else?
So, sorry, I was just, cuz Dr. Valeski, you said, sorry, you said that when Dr. Pan asked about the restorative, I was under the impression that that was making the punishment a teachable moment. Is that?
It is, it is, but it's less punitive. I mean, in terms of, instead of putting a student in a suspension or some kind of greater punitive, yeah, it's more reflective. It engages the student.
Okay. Can you give us an example of what that looks like?
Somebody involved in, hmm, I'm trying to think of an example right now without.
Like the graffiti locker?
I'm sorry?
Like graffitiing a locker, graffiti on a locker?
If you graffiti a locker, the problem with that one is if you graffiti a locker and it ends up being a bias situation, it becomes a criminal act
Okay.
and reportable to the prosecutor's office.
Dr. Valeski, the restorative justice, the one, the one thing, I think a, a good example to use is when they, when the, the state legislature implemented this, this is probably about eight years ago, seven or eight years ago. It used to be that, you know, they would have detentions for kids in kindergarten, first, second grade. That's not permitted anymore. Cuz they don't want, they, they want young kids to learn from their mistakes as opposed to being punished and singled out, and you have lunch detention, you can't be on the playground with your friends. So restorative justice, it, it looks also at the age level of what's occurring. And they're realizing, you know, if you're a elementary school kid, you make a mistake, is there a punitive aspect to it? If you're in high school and you're graffitiing a locker, there's gonna be a punitive aspect to it. And, and so it, it really is to try to meet, the, the goal he always is with restorative justice is to correct behavior. And what they have found is with restorative justice, counseling children and having them meet with counselors, et cetera, and the teachers, that has a better, more positive impact, a lasting impact than sending a kid to, you know, in-school suspension, or lunch detention, or after-school suspension. So that's really kind of the best example, I think, is a lot of it's age-based when they're doing it.
Thank you.
What, so I, I do wanna mention that part of restorative justice and the impact we've seen in East Brunswick, and Dr. Figaro can attest to this, are SSO teams that work directly. seen in East Brunswick, and Dr. Figaro can attest to this, our SSO teams that work directly with students, who develop relationships with students, has been, has had a significant impact on the lives of some students, because they now have a role model and somebody that they, they can personalize, they can talk to in a very safe space. And our SSOs have really been very good about that, and I, I give them a lot of credit.
And I've, I've had the opportunity to use restorative justice with tiny people. And as a parent, now I see, like, why I would want that for my child, because I had a child who tore another child's work off the wall in the hall, just careless, like, little kid just rip it. And the child whose work it was, was distraught. Under the old system, the one who did the tearing wouldn't have gone outside at lunch, which just makes that kid angry...
Yeah.
...and doesn't do anything. But under the restorative justice, there was a meeting with a list of questions to have the child who did the tearing consider what the impact was to other people and how they felt, and what his actions caused, and eventually brought in the other child to also, he wanted to apologize on his own and talk about it. It's just a different ending than just you sit on the bench at recess.
Yeah. I, I think it's just important for parents to know that, so that, you know, they know what the approach is. Thank you.
I just wanted to point out one thing, whereas giving you the overview of the policies. You, the question was talked about, there was a question on the academic integrity in the cellphone, the, the, the use of the electronic devices. So, let's talk about use of electronic devices. That's not a mandatory policy. So, there's not a law that mandates cellphones not being used. There's discussion in the legislature to implement that. And if the legislature implemented it, then that would become a mandatory policy. But right now, the board, this board here, has the right to implement this policy to regulate the use of cellphones or electronic devices in schools. And that gives you an example of the difference between mandatory versus one that is optional, which, which you're passing.
I just had one more comment, that as a parent who did not want my children to have cellphones when they were younger, when the other kids were getting them, I would have loved the change in policy, because there was so much peer pressure by the other kids having, because the other kids made fun of anybody who didn't have one out at lunch. And I felt that I wasn't being allowed to parent, like, I was being pushed in a direction. So, I am grateful for parents who want to make these own decisions for themselves as to what age their child gets a phone, that we're giving a little more space for that. All right. I'm sorry, that was a lot of discussion. Anyone else? But good. All right, because there's a lot of positive change coming. This is a roll call vote.
Anna Braun?
Yes.
Timothy Cummings?
Yes.
Jamie Falco?
Yes.
Louis Figaroa?
Yes.
Lori Herrick?
Yes.
Lee Wu Hong?
Yes.
Wilbur Pan?
Yes.
Mary Antanez?
Yes.
Heather Gloss?
Yes. Motion passes. We are on to curriculum, items one through four. Can I have a motion?
Go on.
Lori?
Second.
Second. Wilbur, any discussion? Wilbur?
I have a question on item four, the comprehensive literacy, literacy screener. I just wanted to double-check on how comprehensive this tool is. So, so first of all, are there any standard literacy screening things that this tool does not do?
So, we went through a comprehensive RFP process, as outlined in the description there. And we put out the RFP, and we had five vendors submit proposals. As a committee, we reviewed the proposals and came up with the product we think will best meet our needs here in East Brunswick. And also, the Working Group on Student Literacy in their recommendation report, which was put out in February, also ranked screening tools. And this product was, along with another product, the only two that were recommended by the state. All the other products were recommended with support, meaning we would need to add on. The other company, the two that were recommended by the state, the other company did not respond to this proposal.
Okay. So, if I can just go back to my question. So, are there any standard literacy screening tests that this tool does not cover?
No.
No, okay, thanks. And one, one last question on this. Does this cover the dyslexia screening?
Yes.
Yes, okay, thanks.
Lori?
Same, under number four, for the literacy screener. I'm just looking at the group totals or the assessment that you used. It seems that the Amplify one had the least, well, not the least, but one of the least in cost effectiveness. I know it rated high in other categories, but what were, what was used to determine like cost effectiveness?
I mean, it was basically the per pupil price, but again, the other products, we would have to supplement with additional pieces, and this one is comprehensive. So, it is a little more expensive, but we're getting what we're paying for.
Anyone else? Libra?
For the same item, the, the, the literacy screen. So, will this be, start in this September?
Yes.
Okay. So, we already approved the last year, the twenty-five, twenty-six budget. What kind of budgetary impact to our current budget?
So, first of all, the universal screener in K to three is mandated now in the state of New Jersey. There, the state put out a grant, and we applied and were, and received funding through, through Focus Grant to support this project. So, we will be implementing K to six this fall.
But the state only provide K to three. We are trying to do K to six.
Yes.
So, which, which means additional resource is needed for your effort.
So, to, to cover the K to four buildings, we are using funding that's already in our budget to supplement the grant. And then for the Hammer Schul students, we're going to be looking at using Title I funds for that building.
Okay, thank you. So, I just let, I want to publicly know that this board and the previous board always try our best, take extra miles to help our student. For this, for this example, state only required K to three screening twice a year, but this board decided to do K to six, three times a year. So, this, you know, we are doing everything to help our student, but it's decided, in fact, that means a lot more extra resources needed. Maybe in future, if we don't have any resource, we may scale back to the state mandatory required level. So, this is just a warning. So, we are, we are trying whatever available to help our students, we are willing to do extra, more than the state required. Historically, the board is doing, and we will do, keep doing this job.
Just to clarify, Mr. Hong, I went back and I did check in the budget, and this was specifically budgeted.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
And also, just to clarify, it's a per student purchase? So, how many times you screen the student, the price doesn't change?
I just, I just have a quick question about the same item, number four. Increasing the amount of time students are doing screeners or tests may have a effect on mental health, specifically with the increases in anxiety and comorbid neurodivergences. Are we going to be looking at the implications of additional screenings and how students respond to this as well?
Yeah, that's a good point. So, part of the rubric was the length, and this is under ten minutes per student.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. This is, this is, this is a voice vote. Sorry, I was looking at the next section. I'm sorry. It's the voice vote. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right, motion carries. We are on to business and support operations, items one through, on the new budget, it's how many? Twenty-something?
Through twenty-two.
Items one through twenty-two. Remember, if you are traveling, this is the one where there will be abstentions.
You just have to abstain on the one, the item that's specifically named here.
Thank you. Can I have a motion, please, for building and support operations?
Motion.
Move.
All right, Jamie, and then Wilbur?
It's a race.
Discussion?
Thank you for Lawrence Brook PTA, for donating one thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars to be used towards the purchase of an outdoor sensory path. It's going to be fantastic. So, thank you to them.
I was going to have the same comment, because while that's wonderful for the entire community and for all the children, it is so inclusive for our children that are neurodivergent as well. Anyone else, discussion? Lori?
I just wanted to make a comment on the community programs. And again, what a wonderful job they do, planning the Schools Out programs on days that the schools are closed. Again, it looks like they're doing so many great things this year. I wish I could be a student and go to some of them, but I thank them for their effort. They're just an amazing asset that we have, you know, community programs and helping parents that, that have to work when school is closed. So, I'm especially grateful for that.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah.
Wilbur?
I, I have a, a few items here. So, I, I also would like to thank Lawrence Brook PTA for their generous donation for the sensory path. With everything else, just getting the kids outside is a great thing. So, if I could just work through my list, sorry. For item number two, the asbestos abatement contract, just from my knowledge, which schools still have asbestos in them? I'm going to guess all of them, but I just wanted to make sure I understood that.
To some degree, all, except for Memorial, because that's our newest construction.
Right, okay, thanks.
But I just want to be clear that, you know, this is not, you know, friable asbestos hanging from the ceilings, you know, that is exposed, they're in, in capsulated situations.
Yep, thanks. Number seven, with the laptop contract. I noted that these new laptops are ACERS versus Lenovo's that I'm kind of used to students walking around with. Are there any support issues that are anticipated? Theoretically, it's all, you know, Windows or whatever, either Chromebooks or Windows, so it should be the same thing, but that doesn't always happen, you know?
I'm going to ask our CIO, Mr. Lutronica, to answer that question.
So, for the past couple of years, we've been going back and forth between ACERS and Lenovo's. So, we've used ACERS both for student devices and teacher devices, and both companies are pretty comparable as far as support. The technicians that we have are certified to support the device, so we can do warranty repairs when we have the parts in-house. So, it really hasn't been an issue.
Okay, great, thanks.
We get the best deal that we can between the two vendors. We can do it against each other.
That's always good, too.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nick.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah. For items eight and nine, item eight, the Funplex, it's noted that that's for, what, K through five, but under nine, there's Sterling Hill Mining Museum, that's for K through six. But it seems to be all for the same purpose, the Schools Out program on that date. Is that an inconsistency, or is that meant to be that way?
Dr. Pan, I'll, we'll have to check. I, there you have, you do.
So, it's based off of age appropriateness.
Okay.
So, you know, we, sixth graders might not, you know, be appropriate to go to the Funplex that's geared towards the younger population. So, we're always looking at what's appropriate. We don't want to send kids that shouldn't be on, you know, kindergarten playground stuff inside, so.
Great, thanks. Last, last thing. This is tangential to item eleven, the contract with Homeland Security. But given that schools starting, and I apologize that this isn't a very pleasant topic, but given the state of affairs in our country today, I was wondering if we could just review what happens if ICE shows up at the schools?
This, this isn't...
Well, I can just talk to you, just a little bit. First off, what happens and what we've done, we've spoken, dealt with the administration of this before. No one comes into a school, they're locked facilities. So, the only thing that you do is, if somebody has a valid subpoena or court order, it's really a court order, they would come in and then, administration has been notified to immediately contact legal counsel so that we could look at it. We want to make sure that it's a valid court order. If somebody comes in and says, I want to talk to somebody, the answer is no. You're not permitted in our schools. And, you know, law enforcement comes in, we have to comply with law enforcement. If somebody has a court order, if law enforcement comes with a court order, we can. I can tell you that when this first came up, there was a lot of fear. It, it hasn't occurred in schools in New Jersey. And so, I think that the, the appropriate thing in place is, you are locked down facilities. So, people don't just come in. But you do have, for example, if East Brunswick Township Police need to come in, they have to indicate why they're coming in. Is there a court order? Is there some type of directive for them to come in? And we always comply. What you do is, you make it always into the front office, and you have, if somebody has to come down, if a student's in trouble and they have to come down, they come, they're escorted to the front office. We don't let police officers or law enforcement go down to the schools, unless, God forbid, you've got a, a, some type of threat. But what we've advised the administration and Dr. Valeski is, that if somebody like comes, call legal counsel immediately and let us look to see, because we have the right to look. There's nothing that's urgent, the kid's in, in the facility, we want to look and see what it is. And we can also then double-check with the court. We can call the court and say, is this a valid order? And if it is, judge ordered it, then we have to comply with it.
Okay. Yeah, no, thanks. That helps a lot. And I'm glad that we have a, a, a plan to address that situation, because, again, given the makeup of our town, you know, we, we probably have higher odds of ICE showing up. I know it hasn't happened yet, but, you know, again, given our community. And the fact still is, is that there are families in town that actually have to think about this every morning, mine being one of them. So, thanks.
And Dr. Pan, I want to assure you that the information that Mr. Jay Kobe just gave you, that was communicated to building principals. So, if they, if something were to happen, that the appropriate communication happens so we can check to make sure we have valid court order, valid subpoena.
We communicated that back in, like, January or February, the school year, and trained everyone on it.
Yeah, I just want to say I was very appreciative, because I called Dr. Valeski about that when it very first hit the news. And the principals and the central administration were already meeting on it to make sure that everybody understood our policy for our children's safety. Anything else? Libra?
So, again, I want to say thank you to Lawrence Brook PTA. So, all PTAs, along with EBES, you guys helped us a lot. It's this very difficult financial challenge, you guys support, any kindly gift, any, mini green, help our student, open the door to them, to them, which the board couldn't support. Thank you very much. And go back to the item number two, this, Dr. Pan already asked, I want to ask further more about asbestos treatment. This contract comes to, again, almost every year. So, can we have a summary or survey showing which building has how much asbestos, tile or anything related? So, we can, maybe we should develop a systematic approach to treat, replace those possible hazards. So, this is my crazy boss comment.
So, every building is required by law to have an asbestos report, and that's available in every school main office. That's a survey that reflects the extent of asbestos that may exist in the, in a building. What we've been doing, so you see, you know, with this award of a contract, but what we've been doing is, as we are replacing flooring or removing carpet, we are doing abatement to gradually pull out the existing asbestos floor tiles. This will be years, that because the, the extent of asbestos containing floor tiles throughout this district is very extensive, considering, you know, when, the age of our buildings, and, you know, when, when the flooring was put in. But we are addressing it bit at a time. And just to make note, in terms of the extent of flooring that's being replaced, this year, within the shared services agreement, was approximately one million dollars worth of work. And that's affecting most of the schools. It's not addressing everything, but it's a prioritization. Part of that prioritization is also removing carpeting, because the carpeting tends to hold germs and is not really a healthy situation. So, we're working on addressing that in a gradual way.
So, can you please provide a summary of the... So can you please provide a summary of the status of this job and the building? And so, report to the board so we know what's going on and what's calling the status of our building? Additionally, I assume this job only can be done during the school break. No student present while the job is handled.
So, some of the work could be done in the evenings, and in those cases, the rooms are kept empty and will move classrooms out, but the work would be done in the evening or on breaks or on weekends. Right now, it's being done during the day, but it would also happen on other times.
Yes, because those tasks can impact our students.
They're also very closely monitored. We have our environmental consultant on-site monitoring the conditions.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
I just, yeah, I had a question on item 14, surplus equipment for disposition. You know, surplus implies extra. I know that it says that this is in disrepair, so I just want to confirm.
Just give me a moment while I look at the list.
And also, is this, Barney, while you look, is this from, like, a woodworking class or was this from our maintenance? Where, where did this actually, and is it being replaced?
So these are, I believe these are all coming out of maintenance and they're antiquated.
Okay, and are they being replaced?
No.
Okay, so it's not a surplus, it's a, okay.
But, but all equipment for disposition or sale is, it's all surplus.
Okay.
Since I do woodworking for a hobby, when I saw those items, it wouldn't surprise me if they were bought on day one when the school district opened up, so we definitely got our money's worth out of it. I recognize the models.
Moving on to where they went, Wilbur, house them.
Yeah. Maybe don't dispose of them.
Anyone else? All right, this is a roll call vote.
And a reminder to abstain on your individual travel items.
And if you're not sure the number, he has it written down.
I really have it written, and I can remind you. Okay, Hannah Braun.
Abstain on number 15, yes on everything else.
Thank you. Timothy Cummings?
Yes.
Jamie Falco?
Yes, with an abstention on item 16.
Thank you. Luis Figueroa?
Yes, with an abstention on item 17.
Thank you. Lori Herrick?
Yes, abstention on 19.
Thank you. Lee Wu-Hong?
Yes, with abstention of item number 20.
Thank you. Wilbur Pan?
Yes, except abstaining on whatever has my name on it.
It's number 21.
Thanks.
Marion Tangiers?
Abstain, oh, sorry, yes, except abstain on 22.
Thank you. Heather Glass?
Yes, abstention, item 18.
Thank you very much.
All right, motion passes. We are on to human resources. Items one and two. Were there done them soon?
Just what was provided to the board previously.
All right, can I have a motion, please? All right, Wilbur?
Second.
All right, Lori? Any discussion? All right, seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Hannah Braun?
Yes.
Timothy Cummings?
Yes.
Jamie Falco?
Yes.
Luis Figueroa?
Yes.
Lori Herrick?
Yes.
Lee Wu-Hong?
Yes.
Wilbur Pan?
Yes.
Marion Tangiers?
Yes.
Heather Glass?
Yes. Motion carries. Moving on to special, special education and student services, items one through five. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second. Anna, Jamie. Thank you. Moving right along, I appreciate that. Discussion? Okay, this is a roll call vote.
Just trying to help.
I know. It's a roll call vote?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, you're ready.
We're ready. There was no discussion. It's your turn.
Hannah Braun?
Yes.
Timothy Cummings?
Yes.
Jamie Falco?
Yes.
Luis Figueroa?
Yes.
Lori Herrick?
Yes.
Lee Wu-Hong?
Yes.
Wilbur Pan?
Yes.
Marion Tangiers?
Yes.
And Heather Glass?
Yes. Motion carries. Moving on to committee reports, information items for the good of the cause for the board. We are there finally. It has been a busy, busy week. We have been here a lot. I had something Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. It's been a super busy week for me. I did want to say, as, a lot happens behind the scenes. So I was very thankful, you know, people ask how we collaborate with township and what we do to provide services to the students in collaboration with the township. We had a meeting on Monday? I'm losing track, no, Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Tuesday. We had a meeting with representatives from the Recreation and Parks Advisory Board and representation from the township, just talking about space use and trying to work out some protocols to make operations smoother. I wanted to thank the township and Dr. Valeski for his time. The meeting was just really profitable as far as being able to share information. And also, it was to talk about how to get more information out to parents about what the township offers to our children as far as recreation. There's a lot out there, and we want to help the township and REC spread the word.
If I could mention, too, at back-to-school nights, the REC department will be there talking to parents about opportunities for students in the township. And we are planning, once again, to have our coaches, our East Brunswick Public Schools coaches collaborate with the township coaches because of the feeder program system and give our student athletes the best opportunities and chances to explore sports that they may have never considered before.
And I know the Recreation and Parks Advisory Board President is going to be talking to the PTA President's Council about more communication, just to offer more to our students, which I think made this meeting a fantastic use of time. Anyone else, committee reports? Tim, you had a long meeting, but we talked about every last policy. I can't imagine what's left to report on policy. Tim had a really long meeting, it was good. Anyone else?
I had a comment.
Sure.
So, this may look like a little thing, but I think it's actually really terrific. I saw on the school district Facebook page that some of our counselors were out there taking college tours, all in an effort to be better resources for our students. And that honestly is a level of commitment that I had not seen before. Maybe it's happening all the time here, and I was just unaware of it.
It does, it happens every year.
But it was, it was so gratifying to hear that, because I know my boys never told me about what their counselors were doing because they don't tell me anything. But, yeah, I think that's just a great example of, you know, what we, you know, what we do for our students. So, really appreciated that.
We're getting your boys in so much trouble because they come back and they report, they visit different colleges every year, right?
They do.
Which is interesting, because then they come back with fresh information about each school. And I know they came back last year with information about additional things kids could put on their college applications as far as activities. I had no idea that children could put childcare for siblings as an activity, which is fantastic.
Anyone else? Anna?
Oh, sure. Could, could we just address emails? Because I know, you know, the community sends a lot of emails, and I don't always see them being replied to. I don't think they necessarily, you know, all need to be replied to, but I just want to make sure that somebody is replying. Like, I recently sent an email, because I had, you know, questions about the ILA pilot, and I didn't get a reply. So, and I also had sent an email, I guess a couple of weeks ago, from a, you know, forwarded from a community member. And I just want to make sure that we people are getting replies. And I would appreciate a reply, too, even if it's just, "No, Anna, that's a dumb question. Don't ask me that." I would just appreciate some kind of reply.
I don't think you'll get that reply.
Oh, well, I...
I hope.
I'm just saying.
So I apologize, Dr. Braun. I will, we'll find, you know, what happened with your email, but we do, the, the emails go to a general box, Board of Education. They go to, all of you see them, or you should see them. And then we look at, and some of them are just, they're commentary. They're not asking for an answer. But the ones that do ask for an answer, we, we attempt to gather information and give them a thoughtful response.
Okay, and you copy us on those, right? Okay, because otherwise I get...
Sometimes, sometimes lately, though, I may not have copied the entire board on the response.
Okay, okay.
So...
Because otherwise I get paranoid and I think that my email's not working. So I've actually emailed myself just to check.
So I'll, I'll try to do that to, to make sure that you know that I have responded.
Awesome, thank you. I, I do appreciate that.
And, sorry, just to piggyback off that, Anna, I know the question has come up about if board members can individually respond, so I don't know if President Glass or Mr. Jukobi, whoever...
We've had some discussion on that, and we have that to be discussed later.
Okay.
But I do have answers for you.
Okay.
But I want to get the consensus of the board first.
Yeah, and just as, sorry, Dr. Valeski, just as a, you know, I think it's helpful, even if it's just a commentary from someone, to just say, you know, response, email received, thank you for your feedback. I think it's more helpful than a teleprompted answer that they're getting from the email, so maybe perhaps we can discuss that as well.
Yeah. We're always open to whatever this, whatever this board, I want to reflect your personality in this because that was decided by a former board composition that there would be at least a, a crafted response to every email that the email was received. And, and so, whatever this board decides that you want to do, we'll, we'll craft it that way.
Okay.
And when we did that, I spent a lot of time emailing myself to see what would happen. I, I did it, too.
I still do.
Do you?
It's been a while to see what happens.
I love to see if I send it to the board of the auto-response, like, comes up on top, and I'm like, okay, that's what it says. But I do, I do have something.
And then we bother Mr. Eletronica about it. Go ahead.
Sorry, Nick.
So, a few months ago, New Jersey School Boards had asked for proposals for the upcoming conference in October, and I submitted a proposal entitled, don't laugh, Innovative Solutions: Navigating Funding Cuts with Creative Strategies. And my suggestion was that it would provide the opportunity for districts to share creative solutions and strategies that they have come up with to navigate funding cuts. Well, unfortunately, it was not accepted, but I was informed that there would be similar opportunities this year at, you know, the New Jersey School Boards meeting in Atlantic City, and that would also be added to the list in case of cancellations or schedule changes. To add to that, since I am the delegate for New Jersey School Board, from this board to New Jersey School Boards, some of you know that in May, I attended, or attended the Middlesex County meeting and suggested some ideas about better communication or how to increase communication and work more closely with other boards in our county and possibly throughout the state. So they have continued to follow up with me on my ideas. And if all of you probably have looked at the New Jersey School Board's Connections page, so they are revamping it a little to provide more opportunities for conversations and questions. So you probably see some of my questions coming soon, because after the revamp, I said, "Oh, I definitely have some questions."
I've responded to...
I saw yours about the Oprah, Oprah, yes, I saw it. Yes. And then last week, at the New Jersey State Board of Education meeting, Kalen Deros, who is our, who is from East Brunswick and is the student representative, she gave a fantastic report about a leadership event that she attended. And it was really great to see her, like, sitting up there with members of the state board, right? Like, it's pretty amazing to have somebody from East Brunswick up there. And I'm hoping that at some point, we can invite her to one of our board meetings to kind of give an update about her experience or how things are going. And then, I guess, like, since this is really, like, our last board meeting publicly, right? But before school, that it's, you know, I just want to say, like, good luck to our students and staff. And as we begin the new school year, I think it's really important that we support our students and staff by attending school and community events, and whether it's athletic events, student groups, club events, PTAs dying to donate, it's just really important to show up and be there for our students and our, our school community.
All right. I also wanted to add, in, in going to the school board's convention, our particular school board has a very high attendance by our board members compared to some other districts. And I think it's representative of the commitment of the board to learning and professional growth and collaborating with other districts. It's really nice to see. I've talked to people, I talk to people on other boards in Middlesex County a lot, and there's some of them have never been. And I push a lot for, it's a really good learning experience for all of us, and it's a good place to gather new ideas and talk. I also wanted to mention, I forgot, I wanted to thank Dr. Valeski and Randy Gagnon. McMiniman was there?
Oh, yeah, for the, I'm sorry, for the, the production of our back-to-school video.
And John McMiniman, for, McMinman, I can't ever say it, for the production of the back-to-school video. And I really want to thank you for being open to doing it a little differently this year. We are trying to make the video that goes with the back-to-school night more condensed to give parents more of an opportunity to spend those times in that classroom with those teachers and really being there to get that excitement and feeling that their child is, you know, in an exciting and safe learning environment where they are valued. So we know, parents, when I know when I go, I enjoy the videos, but I want the time with the teachers and the time in the room. So I really appreciate your flexibility on that, your creativity. It was fun.
Oh, it was fun, all right.
It was a little stressful.
It was fun. Yeah, with, I want to thank you for the multiple takes I had to make. And Karen Medler, too, who was production assistant in the back of the room, pointing, going, "No, that wasn't, no, that wasn't good enough, no. No, do it over again." So hopefully, hopefully, it's going to turn out all right. I, I have no idea.
I'd like to say that the president of the East Brunswick Education Foundation only had to do his part one time. He was, he was on, he was on point. We appreciated it. But thank you. Anything else?
All right, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Move.
Oh, wait, are we going into...
Close, sorry.
I'm so sorry. Do I have to do the closed session? Are we going back?
We need, we need a motion for closed session.
Okay, do I have to read the whole thing again, or can I just take a motion for closed session?
I just do the beginning.
Just do the beginning, sorry.
Keep it, no.
Keeping it short. Here we go. Whereas the Board of Education must discuss matters which are not appropriate discussion in a public meeting, and whereas these subjects are within the exceptions to the Open Public Meeting Act and are permitted to be discussed in closed session pursuant to NJSA 10-12B, and whereas the Board of Education intends to discuss matters as follows as listed on tonight's agenda. Length of the closed session?
An hour.
Will be approximately one hour, after which...
May be taken.
The board will reconvene and action will be taken. Can I have a motion to go closed? Wilbur?
Second.
And Marion, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you, everyone, we are back and closed.